We'll call to order the regular committee of the whole meeting. Can we begin with roll call, please?
Councilor Summers.
Here.
Dutterman.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Busman.
Here.
Kearns.
Here.
All right, our first item Gateway History Club. Mr. Rowland, are you taking this one?
I think by default I might.
Yep. Greg left you hanging.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, John Rowland, Gateway History Club. So Greg sent a letter to the council.
It's on that screen there too, sir, if you need it.
I won't read it. I think everybody's had a chance to read it. But it's basically an outline where the history club has stepped forward and has declared or stated to several committees in town that they would be willing to act as kind of an intermediary and take on the, excuse me, take on the Bethel property on Third Street if the bank and the history club work out some sort of an agreement. So they're talking, we're in the process of working with the bank on it, and we just wanted to give the council a heads up that we may acquire the property as a 501(c) and that we'd certainly at some point want the council's input and cooperation on the project as we go ahead and restore the Bethel property, probably as a historical park or a memorial garden of some type. That's the preliminary plans. So it's a very historic site. It's a shame that, you know, the church is actually degraded to the point where it probably has to come down according to all the information we've been given. But that was certainly one of the first black churches in eastern Iowa. Muscatine has the earliest black church established in the state of Iowa. Cedar Rapids was, the Clinton church was established in 1866. I was looking the other day at Cedar Rapids Bethel Church. That was established almost 10 years after the Clinton church. And of course, when the migration from the east came westward into Iowa, the river communities were always some of the first towns to develop and grow. So makes sense that the first black history church in Iowa is in Muscatine. And a little side note, Comanche had a very significant black population before Muscatine established their church. So I'm doing some research on that as a little side note, but I found that fascinating that we had about 20 black members living in Comanche in the 1840s. So I thought that was, and landowners and ran businesses. So I thought that was extremely interesting. So any questions about the project or what plans are being cultivated at this time?
Any questions from council?
Good. That was easy.
All right.
I'll send the bill to Matt.
Well, and I think the big piece too is that, you know, this is a great spot, but it also, I think, when it's finally completed in whatever form it takes is that it would then come back to the city to overall maintain and keep up for years to come. And I think that's a part of this as well when I talked to Greg on this and according to the notes. So that's another piece that would bring to the council at some point on whatever the make and model is, is to make sure that it lives on for as long as we possibly can through having the city maintain that, almost like a park if you will, that same thing and overseeing that.
All right, is there, go ahead. Okay, you're just getting ready. Is there anything that we would need to approve at this time or just kind of acknowledge?
It's up to you guys. We could, we could have you move this to a business meeting if you want to get to that point or if you want to wait until more develops.
I think we should wait till more develops and it should go through the finance committee because at the end of the day, it's a check that should be writing, so.
Are they asking for any money? I didn't catch that.
They will be for the maintenance part of it.
Oh, for the maintenance part of it down the road, yes.
This is going to be a slow-moving project. It's not going to happen quick.
Okay, I think, that's fine. We just want to acknowledge this for now, hold tight before any formal votes. Okay, all right, thank you very much. I guess last chance for questions on this one? No? All right, we'll move on to 2B, Mr. Vickers.
Good evening, just for the record, I'm Dave Vickers, honored to serve as Chair of the Clinton Home Rule Charter Review Commission. I know you all are used to your finance committee meetings opening with a joke. Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to try to top that, but I will offer a quote from writer, author, and philanthropist Rohini Nicolini, who said, "We cannot be mere consumers of good governance, we must be participants, we must be co-creators." And with that in mind, on behalf of the Home Rule Charter Review Committee, I would like to thank the mayor and the city council for trusting us with the task of reviewing the Clinton Home Rule Charter. We should go back and recognize the citizens who were charged with developing the original charter. Those elected in July of 1986 during the term of Mayor Clyde Johnson were, I have to read these, Marion Judge, Gene Dimkowski, James Gassman, Charles Pelton, H. Edward Obermiller, Byron Starr, Robert Pillars, Charles Armstrong, and Mildred Eggers. The establishment of this charter was important to the people back in the 1986-87 period. Here's your evidence of that. In 1987, on April 28th, the citizens supported the charter with an over 80% support, with 3,666 saying yes to the charter, 606 to retain the at-the-time form of government. Through the mayor and the council's appointment process, this year's committee was chosen to include Bill Mischevich, John Iseman, Joseph Hoinkis, Sean Connell, Matt Brish, Ryan Beenstra, Rich Phelan, Aaron George, and myself, Dave Vickers, plus alternates Don Hanson and Kenyon Clark. Throughout a dozen sessions, including a public input session, we had various discussions about a number of issues we considered important to the governing of the city. You have a report with all the details about those proposed changes. Joey Hoinkis and Rich Phelan will now touch on some of the highlights. We know there will be some questions and discussions relating to the suggestions and the information in the report you have in hand. Our presentation should not take long. If you could take notes and save your questions and comments until we are done, so you have complete picture, that would be helpful to all.
Hi, for the record, I'm Joe Hoinkis. And this is Rich Phelan. Where are we starting here, Rich?
Want to give us the first page?
Yep, do you want the PowerPoint or do you want the?
PowerPoint.
Yep. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, we can skip, this is just a, this is just the title, we can go to the next one. Okay, and I think you guys know most of this stuff here, basically background on the Home Rule Charter, right? So it was established in 87, as we just heard, it's one of eight forms of government under Iowa Constitution, and there's five municipalities that currently have a Home Rule Charter, were one of them. Should be reviewed every 10, at least every 10 years, so we're a little bit delinquent here, but, okay, here we go. You can go to the next one. Actually, on this slide, I think all the information has just been covered by Dave, other than maybe just touch on the purpose towards the bottom there, and that was really to, for the Home Rule Charter Commission to update and ensure the charter's current and accurate, improve voter involvement and access, improve effectiveness and efficiency of city government, and to improve city communication and accountability to voters. So the review process that we used, we reviewed the other four cities that have Home Rule charters, discussed the strengths and opportunities of those. We reviewed the other forms of government currently used in Iowa, Leclerc and some others, for example. We got some input from nearby cities, and we also reviewed options with the Iowa League of Cities. Okay, this is actually the same presentation that we did for the public, so there's probably a little bit of information in here that you might see that might seem repeating things, but okay. So basically, our review is, the current recommendations of this, reduce the number of city council seats from seven to five, elect all city council members at large, clarify the role of the mayor as the chief executive elected officer and key communication conduit to the city administrator. We adjusted the minimum number of qualified electors needed for initiative and petition, and really that's only the number, we didn't change the percentage, so we recommend that we drop it from 1,500 to 1,000, and add a citizen's, a citizen salary advisory board for the elected officials. Okay, so the discussion points on city council, right, reduce the number of seats to five. We looked at the city population, it's decreased since 1970 by about 10,000 people. We were looking at our goals, which were to improve the efficiency of city government, attract more qualified, committed, and diligent candidates. Since 2002, voter turnout has fallen significantly, and also since 2002, there's been 10 unopposed elections in city, for city council. And our opinion was that contested elections result in higher voter turnout, and that's really what we're looking to do. Also, to propose, city council members are elected at large, all of them, and that was to increase the pool of interested and qualified candidates, and to view, basically, very few of the challenges that are faced by the council pertain to one particular ward, so we felt that it was better to recommend that all city council members be elected at large. Both of these would require city council and citizen petition approved at a municipal In regards to the mayor, we wanted to clarify the role, as I mentioned earlier, establish him as the chief executive elected officer, establish the mayor's role as the key communication conduit to the city administrator, and city council would still retain full control of the city administrator, that is, hire and fire and performance review, that sort of thing. The mayor would provide input to the performance review of the city administrator. Propose an existing ordinance regarding the administrator performance reviews be strengthened, and the HR Charter Commission to make those recommendations. Really, the reason, our reasoning behind making these recommendations with this, to try and ensure some accountability, as it can be very difficult for somebody to have seven different bosses, or five in the new, the new proposal, and also for the city council, it's difficult to figure out, you know, who's directing who, right? So we felt that that would provide some additional efficiencies in, in, basically, the city administrator's role. And as a chief executive officer, the mayor would be the focal point for communication and accountability. And then, that's it, because this next one was really just to communicate to the public. So with that, that's kind of our thoughts. I don't know if you guys got any questions?
Is there any questions from council to start? I do want, and I talked to Dave, we're going to pull up the actual charter document and go through all the red lines, just in case anybody has any questions on that. I think it's an important part as well, just because there are some things that are, that weren't necessarily in the presentation that are proposed to be changes, some are just wording and some are some other things, so. But I'll open it up if there's any questions to start.
Question.
Go ahead.
Seven to five, and they're all going to be at large, correct?
That's what the recommendation is, yes.
How is that going to come out to be an even balance across the state? Because you could end up with everybody from, we'll say, Rhonda's ward.
Right.
So how's that even representation?
Good question. It depends how the mayor wants to go through this.
You can answer that.
Well, I won't get into that yet. Do you want to, what do you want to mention? We do have a few members of the committee, if you want to raise your hand, we don't recognize, make sure you know who some of the, so if they want to jump up and say something, but before we jump into that, because we can easily get distracted, we know that because we did, would you like to go through, maybe if you could bring up the charter itself, Matt? Oh, not the report, the charter. And go through, because we could get to the council, there's a few, go through step-by-step each change, or do you want to just jump into the big ones first?
I would think we just run from the top of the document down to the bottom, hit the red lines that changed, and then, Ron, we'll make sure we come back to your question.
We won't forget you, Ron, because that's, that's a good question. I know who's going to answer that one. As we looked at the charter, looked at some of the things that came up in the city code as we discuss things, we noted that the city code has changed to hiring a city administrator, I always got to keep them straight. The city charter still refers to an administrator or a manager. There is a difference. We're just recommending that the charter follow the same language as the city code. It's as simple as that. We went through, so you'll see that change in a number of different places where the charter refers to manager, administrator. We made them all consistent with the city code. That's all that, that does. There are some minor, there are some differences in duties. People have used them interchangeably over the years, just, it was the idea just to clean up the language. That's where that came from. The next one, I believe, is the council that Ron mentioned, and I'll say this, and this was a lengthy discussion, so we covered, discussed a lot of those things, they're valid questions. Bottom line is, before he says that, and I'm going to, I'm going to point to your legal counsel, Pat O'Connell, to answer a lot of this, because there is a specific state code, as I understand it, as we understood it, that the charter, if there's a specific code dealing with something, the charter cannot. You cannot change the composition within the charter itself. That's only done by a citizen-driven petition submitted to the council that would then cause a public vote on that specific proposal. Am I generally correct, Pat?
372.131A of the code states that if you want to switch the composition of the council, you have to do that by petition and election. So the council, even though that's redlined in the document, that's just to show you that the, that the committee recommended doing it, but you, when you, let's say the council decides to pass every other part of this to change the charter, which you can do under subsection two of 372112, the council can amend the charter by ordinance if it wishes, and then if the citizens disagreed, they could bring a petition to change what we did, but if they don't do anything, then that change would be permanent. But you cannot change that without the petition and election procedure. So when you see that red line, that is the one part that you just, you can't take out by council vote. They're just showing it that way to show you that that's what they recommended. They want to go from seven to five and eliminate the wards. So I could, I could see a number of different ways this could happen. You could have a petition, citizens could put two petitions on the ballot to go from seven to five and leave the wards, if they wanted, or they could go from seven to five and eliminate the wards, or whatever the citizens choose to do, and then that would be up to the voters to change the composition.
Oh, it has to be citizen-led?
Yeah, so somebody, and these are all, I think most of the members of the commission, if not all of them, are all citizens, right? So any one of them could be the petitioner if they wanted, or they could enlist someone else in the community to do it, it doesn't matter. I know some of them were torn, like, should I do that if I was on the commission? I don't think they, they're precluded from doing it, they certainly could, but that's how that's got to happen. The rest of this, you can, most of that you can change.
So Pat, what's that? What's that? Let's just, I know it's not happening in this election, well, I don't think it is, but let's say it happens this election, and the election's finalized and that petition's passed to change the composition of the council from seven to five, what, what then happens?
If that passes, then I would recommend that we go, then we can go in and amend the charter.
No, no, no. Because we still have seven council members at that point.
By attrition.
Okay.
By attrition.
No, I believe, I believe there's, your colleague Pat says, I believe there's a section in the code that then would call for an election to elect five, say, say the public support of five at-large council members, there would then be an election at some point to elect five at-large council members.
Five new?
Well, you could run, but you, as I understand it, and Pat corrected me if I'm wrong, you, you seven council members would be out of a job. You could run for, you could run for election to one of the five at-large seats, but the first ward position would be gone, the second ward position would no longer exist, the three at-large positions would no, there'd be no automatic carryovers, as I understand it. And then there's a system, then, who picks who gets four-year terms, who gets two-year terms by vote totals to set up the staggered four-year terms. Am I correct on that?
I don't know, Dave, I'm going to have to look at that.
You're going to look at?
I'm more focused on right now what we're trying to do, but that's certainly, we got, we'll have to get you a memo on all that. If we choose to, you know, if we get a petition, we'll have to be prepared.
Yeah, so it'd have to be a petition with how many signatures?
The current number, 1,500.
No, it's not, it's not an initiative or referendum petition. It's driven by that, whatever you say, 37213 section calls for.
Yeah, if they meet the terms of the code and they get the minimum signatures that it's required in the code, then it goes on the ballot, and then the auditor has to receive the language that we're, that there's, the citizens have petitioned for by the date that's required for, you know, and then we have to get the special election scheduled. So if we get a petition, the first thing we're going to do is start liaising with those folks to figure out what they want and all that, and I'll have to have all that research ready in case that happens.
Okay, so say.
Can I just interject here a little bit, Rich Phelan? We envision this, if you choose to decide to go with this, it'd be several elections, several, a couple of elections process to get where we want to go.
Through attrition, like Matt kind of just said, yeah. That's kind of what I envision.
Otherwise, you lose all.
You can't have, I would be nervous to have five new people that have never been here.
No, that's not what we envision at all, but also, the thing I want to say here is that the council, doing it according to Iowa code will control this process. And I don't want to put words in the mayor's mouth, but we have talked about this, and I think the first thing that the mayor suggests, if the council agrees, is to put this on a referendum for the citizens to approve at first. And then the petition to change the council size and at-large could probably be done concurrently, but that's something we're going to have to ask Pat about.
So it probably, it might change the cost, I'm not sure, I haven't looked at that yet, but you could have one referent, you could choose not to do it by ordinance and instead put it on for petition and election to change the charter, which is what Rich is suggesting. If you wanted, you could just assume that everything except the ward, the number and ward is going to be non-controversial and pass it by ordinance under 372112, and just see if anybody files a petition to change what we did, because they may not object, there may not be anybody in the community that cares about that. I think that that change is what has to be put out for sure. So it's an open question whether, you know, Rich thinks it'd be advisable.
But there's other things, other things that we've suggested here that the citizens ought to have a say in.
And you can do it that way, yeah.
Can you, could you put each one of these items on a ballot separately?
Yes.
So that, so the citizens have a, you know, basically like a choice of what?
You could certify questions to the auditor, and whichever one they pick is what is going to be the law.
Would that be the same petition, or would you need a separate petition for each question?
Well, when the ballot comes out, each question would be listed separately.
Okay.
And they would, yeah, they'd be separate petitions for each question.
Do you want to decrease the council to five, yes or no?
Correct.
Do you want to eliminate wards, yes or no?
Correct.
Right?
It could be done that way.
And a twist, you could also have a petition to keep the current status quo.
Correct.
And you could have a proper way to do it on the election would be you choose between keeping as it is or changing it. That's the most transparent form of government.
Sure.
I think as Pat explains, the question of the council comes from the citizen petition, not from, that, we, that was one of our debates, was how to put this forward. As I think we discussed, the citizens could vote on the charter with this included, that's not going to change the council, if I'm interpreting correctly, Pat. So putting it out there as a ballot, as a charter question, is not going to change. That will, that will not cause a change. The only cause is if there's a petition, and I don't know the number, but it's not an, it's not part of the initiative and referendum of the charter. It's driven by that, what do you call it, is it 372?
1311A.
Yeah. Whatever that specific code section says is the charter number.
Whatever we do, we should make it most confusing for the voters.
Yes, and this does, I don't think that's what we were heading for, but it does.
I don't think that's what we were heading for, but it, it does.
And it's not to be mean, but it has to be very clear and precise of what has happened.
That's why I asked if it could be separate questions, because you can make it much more clear depending on what you ask.
Yeah, and I don't know what the charter, what that, what the petition part says, how you do that.
Okay, we, we could work that out.
Yeah, if you want to, that's, that's, that's the council's decision.
Behind you, David.
To, to answer Ron's question about how is that representative governance if, if we went to all at-large versus the wards, and that was a, a robust part of our discussion. And the consensus was that opening it up at-large, the ability to draw the five best people without geographic confines outweighed the fact that we were doing away with the wards. That was, that was the consensus of the committee.
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement on that. And, and it may help you, Ron. So getting the past four records from elections, now, I'm in the first ward. And I take umbrage to that last statement. For the last four election cycles, the first ward has had the least amount of registered voters. That's a bad start to begin with. For the last four election cycles, the percentage turnout of registered voters has always been the first ward. So much so that even on the last election in twenty twenty-three, the first ward only had three point five zero percent of their registered voters show up. Now let's go to the fourth ward, twelve point one nine percent. That's a huge, huge difference. If you're telling me that the first ward is gonna have a voice if it goes that way, I'm here to argue with you on that. This is a wake-up call to you people in the first ward. Okay, you need to listen up and get out there. If you think this is gonna go through, you're gonna lose your voice. When you have the people that want to go run, where are the majority of the people gonna be coming from? It likely will not be the first ward. You take those lines out, so.
Ryan?
Right, Bill, I agree with you a hundred percent, but the one nice thing about this is that to change the, the charter, you only need ten percent of the last election. So you could, fourteen forty-nine, was it fourteen forty-nine, I think was the twenty twenty-three election? So you only need ten percent, a hundred and fifty people. So if a hundred and fifty people in ward one felt like they weren't being represented, they could get a petition and change this thing all over again. I'm with you about representation, though.
So the last election, there were only a hundred and forty-three people in the first ward that voted, so it wouldn't even meet your requirements.
And you also have a huge population density in those apartments in ward one that wasn't there ten years ago either.
Well, guess we'll find out on this next election. The disparity is still there. When you break down the voters per population, when the population is broken out evenly, that the turnout in the first ward is not there. It's, it's not there. The, the numbers don't go along with what you're saying. So when you have a voter turnout in the fourth ward or the north side, four times that of the south side, and the registered voters are already lower, help me fix that. Let's go get those first ward people registered. Help me with that, and let's get them to turn out.
I would, but.
I might support you on that then.
And I didn't look at the, the at-large candidates. There's five of them, right? Where, I don't know where to find where they're, where they live.
Do you mean for November?
Yeah, it would just be interesting to know where they're all coming from, because you have the first ward, there's no one else running. You know, it's an unopposed election. So I think you can change it if, if a, a group of population in a region thinks they're not being represented.
Ask why they're not running as opposed to the numbers that aren't running. That might be even a better question.
Good question.
Here's the thing I think you should think about also, uh, council members and mayor, is that what issues do you deal with that affect only one ward? Going through the.
North River Drive.
Okay, that's one.
You asked for one. It's a seventeen million dollar project.
Well, I don't think that's just the north.
No, it's certainly not, and it doesn't go just in the.
I guess it has north.
Okay, then, then let me back up a little bit further. Having been one that knocked on the doors of people when I ran the last time for the first ward, because I was opposed for both of my elections, okay, I didn't get the grace of sitting down and just taking over my spot. When I was talking to people between North River Drive and other issues, what was their major concern was substantially different in the first ward than it was in the fourth ward. So there are differences. I would, I would challenge you, Rich, to go out and start knocking on the doors in the first ward and see what their concerns are. It's not some of the things that you may think they are.
I'm not running for office, Bill.
Well, you're up here telling us how to run the office.
No, I'm not. We're making a recommendation. We're making suggestions. It's up to the council to decide what we're doing here, Bill.
No, it's not. It's up to the voters.
The council has to review it and approve it first. The last thing I wanted to say is what really drove us on this was getting that diligent, uh, effective candidates. We've had ten unopposed elections since two thousand and two, ten.
I haven't had that luxury.
Well, I'm sorry. There might be a reason for that.
All right. Ron, did you get your question answered okay?
I think so.
You're all right? Okay, I just want to make sure we, we got it, okay?
And some of these, some of these questions are answered outside of what our proposals entail. But you, you get the sense of some of our discussions over, as, as we discuss this.
And you guys had the same heated discussions, I know that, and, you know, I just, and Bill, I'm not arguing with your opinion at all. I've never sat here and all the time I've been in the council and made a vote based on my ward. It's never happened once. Nor have I ever looked at it as first ward, second ward, third ward, fourth ward. It's, it's the city of Clinton that every, every decision I make is what I think is the best for the city. So I think we could go back and forth on that. I'm not, I don't have the monsters in my closet of all the five at-larges getting together and, and creating an empire in the north end and leaving the south end out of things. I, it's not realistically gonna happen in my eyes, so.
Aaron George, I was just gonna say, I think we discussed this at at least three different meetings. And some people changed their votes. Some of us were pretty set on what we thought from the beginning, and personally, you know, Cody, you're, I'm in your ward, but am I gonna call you first? Maybe. But there's also other people that sit up here that if the issue is something that I think they might be the person I want to ask about that, I will talk to people that represent another ward. I don't feel like I can't call Ron or Rhonda and say, hey, we have this issue. Is this something that you can help with? I think the goal in my eyes was to find five individuals that really want to see Clinton succeed and move forward and just find the ones that rise to the top that are really committed to the job, no matter where they live.
What word is your, what word are you for the county?
We don't have wards.
Okay. All right, Bob, Bob, we'll get to you. Let's just keep going through the document here.
You get the, you get the idea of some of, some of our discussions. Bottom line is, if the council's going to change, and, and we make note, a citizen petition is going to, to, to do that. Section two oh three nine A, I believe that's the one deal with, there's a sentence in there dealing with a spending limit.
We missed number five, compensation. The compensation board?
Oh, we got, oh, okay, change that after this. We moved that around, and, and Pat can put it somewhere else if he wants. One of our recommendations was that the council set up a compensation committee to establish. You guys determined, the idea was so this citizen committee would recommend raises for elected officials. Right now, it's up to you, uh, council members to bring up and discuss on your own whether you deserve a raise or not. Obviously, there's a process for implementation and all that. This isn't, you, you, you could, the idea is to form a committee that would recommend that. How it's set up, who's on it, how many are on it, what their cycle of reporting would be, how that's done is incumbent on, on the council setup.
I was interested a little bit about this one, because I, I feel like this is kind of out of left field in a manner, so I wasn't really sure, like, how, how this came about and what's the discussion that led us to this?
Um, I think Ryan brought it up. It's in one of the other charters that has a, a, a committee like this. That's where it came up. We determined it was a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, your honor, I thought, I read it in the Fort Dodge charter. I believe it's in there. I just thought it was a way to, uh, provide an independent thinking on compensation instead of it coming from you guys voting on raises for yourselves.
Okay.
So just another, another set of eyes.
Okay, and I know, I think the county does this, a review board. Do other, did you get any other cities that do this besides Fort Dodge?
This is the one we really looked at. We just thought it was a good idea. We didn't, and, and it would not change the fact that the council has to vote on the, the compensation.
Right.
That part doesn't change. This just is an avenue for some outside citizen group to generate a proposal for for you to vote on and to, and to discuss just something that, because I know it's difficult for council members to, who's gonna, who's gonna bring up raises this year or next year, and you, you know, you, you, you debate that, who, you know, who, who's gonna do it and, you know, be the person to come out and say, we deserve a raise. Well, this group can.
CEO, though, you were supposed to do it every year, which you have.
We have. I have brought it up every year.
But it's supposed to take place after they leave office.
Correct. So we, we have brought it up, and generally, there's no discussion and we move on.
And we get comparables from all the cities, and we show them that you're way lower than everybody else, and they say, no, I don't want to touch that.
And, but, when we understand that, this was just a, a way maybe that it wouldn't put an elected official on the spot of that, you could, you could take this and then you could do the same thing with it.
Right.
I think we seen the county take their, their recommended raises and, and do different things with them. So, uh, just a thought. That's where it came from.
All right, I just.
And it may go someplace else. We, I happened to put it in there when I was, uh, doing some of the work on the charter. It could go someplace else if, if legal counsel says it needs to go in this section instead of that one. It also then would need to, uh, there's a similar section in the mayor's. I didn't highlight it, uh, but there's a similar section in the mayor's section of the charter that says the same thing. You'd have to reconcile the two. If you changed it in the council, what do you do with the section of the mayor? That's something that legal counsel would have to wrangle out. We didn't deal with that.
There, there's a, it's, it's, initially, when we had a discussion at the committee, there was a discussion about why are we adding one committee to the charter and it doesn't mention any others, and then, but I think it may make sense because, which I presume this is why Fort Dodge did it, was because it does kind of go to the nut of the government, the method of government and a methodology of how, you know, that's probably why they did it. And that, so I, I, I conceded to the committee that it does, it probably makes sense to mention it in the charter, not to spell it out, of course. The council can add that to the existing section where we have all the committees that the mayor appoints, right? We would still have to do that by ordinance, but mentioning it in the charter shows that, you know, this is how we want our government to function, that the salaries of the council would be, be recommended by a citizen committee that studies it and then recommends it up, and then the council can say, do we go with the committee's recommendations this year or do we not? Because I think that's how Fort Dodge does it. I'm sure that's what the county does, is.
Okay.
As Aaron said.
Yeah. Now we jumped ahead, now we get to, uh, two oh three nine A. There's a section, a sentence that basically provides that the council has to approve and expenditure over twenty-five thousand dollars. That is handled in the city code. It's, really is not needed in the charter any longer. When it was put in in eighty-six, eighty-seven, I, I, I was there, but I don't remember the discussion on why it was put in the charter, except citizens who did the charter determined that was, that was an important issue at the time. Now it's, it's, it's handled elsewhere. It's, it's not really needed. Two oh three eleven A, um, that was the, uh, oh, that's the one where, um, council appointed city manager. It just changes to the council may appoint a city administrator with the power set forth in the code of ordinances for such a position, subject to the requirements of the Iowa law and the balance of the charter. Basically, um, just kind of reflects what current practice is. That's what's done. That's what, you know, the way it works. That's the way the process works. It just kind of throws some more words in there to, to make it clear that, um, we're following the code, following the charter for the hiring of a city administrator. And two oh three, oh, that's where it says, I officially put the, uh, the compensation committee in another spot. And then we go to, uh, the powers and duties. This is one of the ones that, uh, we discuss a, a lot. You heard about some of the other things about administrative oversight and some things. Instead of reading all this, you, you've got it in front of you. You got it here. Basically, it clarifies, we use the term clarify and amplify the, the rules of the mayor, the administrator and the council, as far as communication, as far as what they should do, you know, that their certain parameters to follow, certain rules. This was kind of, uh, I hate to say compromise, but it's a, a good, a good, a good settlement to, uh, an issue that we, we wrestled with that helped spell out, uh, some of the things that we believed that could, should be done between, I guess you call it the three, three branches of government, the council, the administrator and the mayor. And, and make sure everybody understood clearly what their, that they had a role and that communication between and among all three was, was important. I think I explained that, did we explain that good enough? If any of you guys, if any of the council or committee members want to jump up, just tap me on the shoulder. I may not see you. That's, that's where that came from. That's one of the, one of the issues that we wrestled with. Another change in administrator-manager. Get down to, um, as you notice, there's a lot of places we didn't really change anything. Here is one, uh, the charter amendments and review. What was in there was, was, um, generally okay. We did this to, um, make sure that it didn't change anything in the requirements. It just also noted that basically that the, uh, this process would follow what spelled out in the code. What was in the charter actually followed that. The same percentage, the same signatures are, are the same. We just kind of updated the wording to make sure that it was, that the city code, or the, the state code was mentioned. That was the basic, uh, idea there. And then, um, let's see. Same thing. It, it just follows the code. Uh, the last thing we made, that was mentioned in the initiative and referendum section, we lowered, uh, the percentage of required is twenty-five percent. We kept that. The minimum signatures were fifteen hundred. We lowered that to one thousand. And, or that was based on lower population, fewer people from that standpoint. Not trying to make it easier. Changing the, making, forcing an initiative and referendum is not supposed to be an easy process. It's like, but it should be something that is doable. If somebody has the passion and has a desire and has a good enough idea to sell people to sign a petition, they can still do that. It still takes extra work. That was basically, um, our proposal. I'll do, just want to say publicly, you can get some other, there's, uh, I didn't, I didn't get that.
It wasn't red in there, so I was trying to find that.
I missed, I missed, in all my work, I, I, I missed one, uh, that should have switched over to red, but, um, that's the only thing that it, it doesn't change anything, is twenty-five percent. So if you get a large turnout for an election of over four thousand people, you would still need, you'd need more than a thousand, but at least the minimum was, we felt, a little more, uh, reasonable just from the basis of, of population. And, uh, I'm sure there are more questions, but I do want to get, uh, just a quick close, uh, before we get done and, and you move on, but on behalf of the Home Rule Charter Committee. But on behalf of the Home Rule Charter Committee, I will say, we appreciated the opportunity to take part in this important process. Members enjoyed the discussions on the topics of importance to the governance of the city and are proud of the report to the city council. The committee made up of residents appointed by the mayor and council, spent many hours over the course of several months developing these recommendations with input from the public and others. The overall report carries the authority of unanimous approval of the committee. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions now, later, about any of these proposals.
Okay.
And I guess the process from here is up to the council, how you want to proceed.
Okay. Mr. Betsinger, did you have something to add? And he had your hand raised earlier.
Just on the first ward.
Do you want to come up to the podium so the folks online can hear you? Please.
Robert Betsinger, Clinton Iowa. I was actually the one, anyway. On the first ward, I'm with Bill. It's an interesting ward. There's always been a low voter turnout, and it's the socioeconomic situation. You've got a large percentage of minorities and poor people in that area. Don't deny it. Now, who's, who among you is going to be a, you know, they've got to be represented in earth from even though they don't maybe vote. They've still got needs. And then I remember one petition, segue over to that, they were going to change the form of government. They want a full-time mayor and eliminate the citizen administrator. Is that stuff still in there? You wouldn't remember that, would you? I know every petition that was put up there. No. Some people said we had too many messy petitions, anyway.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from council on this?
I just, I just got to make a statement, because, and I know Supervisor George can verify this, but if I recall, there's only one supervisor in our city, and I believe the other two supervisors are in different cities. Now, having been politically active even before Supervisor George started running for her office, I never saw any of you people at some of those meetings. So there is a method behind the madness where, speaking with our House Representative Tom Dederman, they don't even like putting more than one supervisor in a city. So yes, there might not be a physical line, but they draw their own lines because they don't like, for the same reason that I don't like it, so.
And, for the record, I think you know who was on the committee. If you have any questions of any particular committee member, I'll go on a limb saying you'd be glad to chat with anybody who might have a question about our discussions. Contact me, contact any of the committee members.
Okay. Is there any other comments from anybody in the audience today?
Yeah, the committee members.
Celeste?
I'm from-
Come on up to the mic for us, please.
I would like to echo the comments that gentleman just made. I am also from the first ward, and I would agree, we are probably not as financially well off, or maybe, you know, we're a lot of blue collar people, you know? We work, a lot of us aren't like professionals that read, write, communicate, advocate for ourselves well personally. And I guess this is kind of, you know, it would have to be a voter thing anyway, so maybe this is kind of wasted airtime, now that I'm thinking about it and I'm already up here.
It's not.
Anyway, but I do like the ward system right now because it is nice to have somebody you can familiarize yourself with that's going to advocate for those specific situations. He hit the nail on the head when he said North River Drive, because obviously, you know, if a big voter turnout is from the north end, they are going to have a lot more say in projects like that than, say, our little, you know, stinky south end that, you know? We're right by ADM, it's the smell of jobs, but, you know? I'm just saying, I agree with what Bill has been saying.
She sounds like a future council representative.
Somebody sign her out.
Absolutely not.
All right. Any other comments from council? Well, I think that we probably should let this digest a little bit, let everybody think about it, talk about it, and then we'll need to bring it back to another committee of the whole and have a broader discussion. Well, I think, I think there's a couple things. Obviously, we have the items on there that have to be voted on by the citizens, right? I think the majority of the items in here should be voted on by the citizens, other than maybe, you know, where we added the word council and, I don't know if we, changing manager to administrator, I don't know if that's a huge deal as far as that goes. So I think that as a council, I think we need to decide what items we could maybe just change, or maybe we, maybe all of them get sent there? I don't know. I think that that's a broader discussion that we have to have. But obviously, when it comes down to the composition of the council, the wards versus the at-large, I mean, I think there needs to be a broader discussion with council to flesh out any ideas or thoughts that we have on that, and then we need to see if a petition happens for that matter, so.
Just a question on that. If they were to vote and go to five, can you have, I know at-large means you can be anywhere.
Right.
But could you make it so that each at-large member is from the first, each?
No, because then you have to call it wards.
That's still a ward system.
Still a ward system.
Right. Yeah. And I think, if I remember the discussion way back there, too, there was a little bit of discussion from the committee about if you went to five council members, keeping three wards or four wards and doing it that way, and then you just adjust your at-large members there, too. So, I mean, that's, I don't know if you want to comment on that?
No, you know, when you're trying to sell something, you shouldn't distract from what you're trying to sell, okay? We believe that the at-large makes sense for the purpose of attracting more candidates. But the one thing that we feel less strongly about is getting rid of wards, and what you could do is go to five, three wards, two at-large. So, I don't, again, I believe the right answer is all at-large, but that's something that the council can discuss, and-
I think that could come to light in a petition as well from the citizens, right? They could petition-
Yeah. I just want to emphasize, legally, we don't have any requirement to talk about it. We can certainly, and give our opinions in an open meeting about whether it should be three wards and two at-large, if we're going to do that. You could certainly do that, but it's not a requirement. It has to come from the citizens. So, I might get, my suggestion would probably be that if somebody wants a petition, I'd be happy to work with any petitioner on the language, I mean, to try to make sure I think it would work for the auditor. You know, whoever does the petition should reach out to the auditor and make sure those questions are clear. But I would suggest that two questions be on the ballot. Shall the council be reduced from seven to five, question one. Should the wards be eliminated? And you could have, for example, a parenthetical, three at-large and two, three wards and two at-large, right? You could have it in the question, so you could give the voters the option to reduce from seven to five, but keep the wards, or go from seven to five and be all at-large. You could give the voters that question, and whatever the numbers turn out to be, that's what passes.
Okay. So then maybe a better approach would be to have it on the next two, three committee of the holes and just have it as a public forum for any citizens that want to come in and give their thoughts on it over the next two or three meetings. We afford that opportunity, it's just more public input.
It also gives us a chance, if we wanted to redraw the wards, for example, if we were anticipating, let's say it passes and it's going to be three, it makes no sense for necessarily to have four. You'd change the boundaries, and that might fix part of the problem with ward one, too. So there's lots of options if the citizens do want to go, want to keep the wards, they could, those could be redrawn to equalize the citizenry in each ward. So, that's all the technical process that has to happen.
The last option would be, you just present this, basically, you present the document as is, if a petition comes, with no changes from council at all, right? And go with the recommendations there. So, there are some, there are some options that we have here, but I do think that we probably should let it simmer, put it on the cowl for October 14th, and then pick up the discussion there, unless somebody else has a different thought. You want to make a decision now?
I just feel like we're dragging this out. Let's, you know, let's do it at another meeting, have a couple of public hearings or whatever.
Well, this is, that's not necessarily something you should go quickly with.
No, I'm not asking to, but the discussions we're having tonight are kind of mute until we hear more from the public.
Correct. All right.
Greg.
Anything else? Yeah?
Excuse me, Councilor Oren, how was your football game?
All right.
Sorry.
No, you're good. Okay. Unless there's any other discussion on this, I think we'll put it on October 14th and pick it up there.
Yes.
Okay?
I like it.
All right. Going to mayor and council updates, I have two things for the council that we need to talk about. The first one would be, November 11th is a regularly scheduled council meeting. That is on Veterans Day. The staff is here, but City Hall is closed that day. Obviously, we could open the doors to the public for the meeting, but do we want to maintain the council meeting on that night, or would you like to move it to, what were we saying, the Wednesday, the next day?
Monday.
Monday or Wednesday?
The 10th or the 12th? Oh, that's right.
We'd want to do Monday?
Oh, that's the state of the city.
12th is the state of the city.
Well, you'll be done.
Yeah. I don't know, I might still be talking.
Yeah.
Never know.
We've got a lot to talk about.
Got a lot to go on, yeah. So we could do it Monday, or we could do it Monday, I guess is the option.
November 10th.
Yes?
November 10th.
Okay, November 10th?
Yeah.
All right. So, December 23rd is a regularly scheduled council meeting. Generally, the last meeting of the year is a business meeting where we're just kind of paying the claims and going on. There's usually not much of debate on that meeting. We are looking at, if people don't want to do it the 23rd, since that's the week of Christmas, 18th, the week, the Thursday before at 5:00, is what has been proposed to do that meeting. Obviously, it would be most likely, that day?
Sounds good.
Is that the 18th at 5:00? Okay. We just wanted to make sure we got your opinion and we communicate those changes to the public as soon as we can, since they're going to change the normally, normal scheduled times. All right. I don't have anything else. Is there council that has any updates on anything?
I'm not running for reelection.
Making announcements?
Hey, but on that regard, there are some folks in the audience that are running for election that are here tonight, so.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four.
I mean, and in reference to the, we do have five at-large for two seats, so we did get a good turnout in that one there, so that's good. All right.
The only thing I have, Mayor, is, who attended Fly Iowa?
I did Friday.
All right, good. First off, thank you to the committee, to the city, especially the staff, the department heads. They helped make it all come together. It was amazing. I was there quite a bit, enjoyed it. I saw Greg there, Rhonda there.
And my brother-in-law came from Rockford and actually knew Susan Darcy. They were my pilots together.
Oh, yeah, you told me that. Yeah, that's fantastic.
And I'm telling you, he was over the moon with how you guys did, you know, in the central committee, you and Marlena, and that, I tell you, Cody, there, I heard, people are saying, this is so cool, and they want it, they want to do it, they want it next year.
Every year.
They want it every year.
Yep.
It was outstanding.
But I can't take credit for it, but the Fly Eye Committee and everybody else.
But you will.
No, it was not me. I was there to, to-
Enjoy.
To enjoy, yep. So, hats off to everybody involved, though, and especially, you know, the staff helped a lot, so I don't think that should go unnoted, so, yep.
And there were people at the League of Cities that came up to me and told me about they'd gone to it and said they had a great time. People weren't from here, so it was pretty cool.
Yeah, we had a lot of out-of-towners. It was a great event for our community, so.
Yep. And I didn't say, but thank you to the Home Rule Committee for all of you being here and the time that you've put in. I know you did a couple of meetings a month, some of them ran kind of long, so we really appreciate all you've done on this, so thank you very much.
Very much.
Yes, thanks, Oliver.
All right. Last chance for any updates? Okay, would entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.